I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call the councilman.
Councilor Darby, this is Councilmember Jones.
Okay.
Councilmember Cave.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver. Here. Councilmember Putnam.
Here.
Councilmember Sager.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here. Any additions to or any additions to the agenda? Councilmember Jones?
I'd like to look at moving B, discussion regarding the surplus of the police truck prior to what is identified as A now. Um, our...
Mr. Goggins to the home for the time being. Any objection to that? So B is now A. And then?
Um, after D, I would like to add a B, discussion regarding, uh, surface water at Ellington and just, uh, Ellington and Milwaukee.
Anywhere.
Oh, Ellington. Ellington and Milwaukee?
Yeah.
And then you go back to the other.
No, we are just...
Anything else? Okay. So next up, we have a hearing. We'll start with Ms. Jacky. She hides in the back. Mark Manin.
Mayor councilmembers, and hopefully can everybody can hear me in the audio. I have a short PowerPoint presentation to start off the meeting to warm it up. Now, I take a little bit to warm it up.
Any pre-warmings, basically? Where is the light on?
Yeah. There we go.
There we go. And now, can you move the mic over to the back door? There, Jacky, there's the... The re...
Mayor councilmembers, tonight will be, I'm just going to have a brief PowerPoint presentation to provide some background information regarding the marijuana regulations. We'll do a little bit of background, summarize the ordinances for the council, and answer some key provisions of the ordinances that were brought up at the last council meeting. The review of the council decisions, options and actions and recommendations. In the beginning, this is probably, a lot of people already know about this, but these are the marijuana regulations or marijuana, the regla, the initiative allowing recreational sales marijuana was passed in November of 2012 underneath Amendment 502. The, since that time, the planning commission has reviewed the proposed regulations in eleven meetings since 2013, one being a public hearing and a recommendation to council. And the council has discussed the marijuana regulations in the eight meetings so far today. The interim regulations prohibiting medical and recreational sales regulate will expire on January 28th of this year, and that's underneath the ordinance 2014-1866. This is, this is a revised matrix of the ordinances that the council asked to bring forward tonight. And this gives a quick summary of what they allow or don't allow. The ordinance 2014-1876 would allow marijuana processors and producers to have conditional use in the light industrial zones, and would allow recreational marijuana sales as conditional use in the commercial zone. Under the ordinance 2014-1872, that would prohibit all medical marijuana dispensaries except the garden. Under ordinance 2015-1888, it would prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana, and that's, but it would still allow producers and processors in the light industrial zone, and recreational marijuana sales would be prohibited. Under ordinance 2015-1891, it prohibits, that would prohibit recreational marijuana sales, producers and processors. And that's new, and that's been brought forward, and the same thing with ordinance 2015-1890, which would extend the interim zoning regulations prohibiting medical and recreational marijuana sales. The question that came up and something that was discussed after the last meeting by the public is, why is there a requirement for a thousand-foot setback for marijuana sales? Well, that is in the revised Code of Washington, RCWs, and within RCWs, and also which is reflected in our code, in the proposed regulations that would allow some form of marijuana sales. It would be a thousand feet outside of school grounds, playgrounds, recreation center or facility, child care centers, public parks, libraries, any, any demarcade admission to which is not restricted to persons age 21 or older, that's a direct quote, and public transit center, which is in our code, in the draft codes, should those type of facilities be allowed. What this translates to, this is an aerial photo of the northern portion of Pacific, and taking that 1,000-foot perimeter from the variety of different uses that we find in the city, and this is just the north portion. You have a school here, daycare, library, have a little park here, park here, park here, some passive parks in the West Hill. So, as you can see, on the northern portion of Pacific, most of the areas where it could be allowed conditionally, it wouldn't be allowed because it's within 1,000 feet of one of those type of facilities. The only place potentially would be, if I can get over here, there's a pure off of Ellington and, and West Valley, there was light industrial that might be a potential area. And these are approximate, of course, in terms of the circles that you have.
Are we not considering existing urban as a park?
It cannot be, underneath the guidelines, a trail is not regarded as a park. This is the kind of mid-Pacific, and it shows where those circles are and the type of uses there if they are. You can see, if I can get the...
Trail working again. Oops.
As you can see, where County Line Road is, that's, that's the change zoning from residential to office park. It would impact on a little bit of the light industrial down in the south of County Line Road. Also, it does impact light industrial over on the west side of the freeway along West Valley. And of course, the remainder of the Pacific and South Pacific, wherever it's commercial or light industrial, it would, if the council approves one of the ordinances that will allow these uses conditionally, this is where they would go in Pacific. Other features out of state law that have to be followed, which are the regulations, is that designers can't be greater than 1,600 square inches or 11.11 square feet, that all the activity in the business, they have to be conducted outside of public view. Uh, no recreational marijuana or paraphernalia shall be displayed or kept invisible to be visible outside the licensed premises. And there'd be sufficient measures and means of preventing smoke orders, debris, dust, fluids, and other substances from existing, from existing...
Exceeding.
Exceeding, exceeding that recreational marijuana business. In terms of the potential actions that the council can take regarding these ordinances, if the council makes a decision that is not one recommended by the planning commission, and the recommendation the council, a public hearing has to take place regarding the ordinances. So, for the most part, all the ordinances that we have tonight, underneath 2015, would require a public hearing. That includes the interim zoning regulations or extending of interim zoning regulations. And this is again, summary of the ordinances. Council actions. The council will still need to extend interim zoning regulations, even if the council adopts permanent regulations. This is based on the fact that the interim regulations, they expire on January 28th, and the fact that if the permanent regulations are adopted on January 26th, the extension of these regulations are necessary because of the gap for the date the interim regulations expire and when the permanent regulations are effective. And that deals with public noticing in the paper. And there's a certain timeline to meet that, and we cannot meet that in time before the interim regulations expire. So, what we're looking at, the recommended council actions for tonight, is open the public hearing, obtain public input on the ordinances that are brought before you, close the public hearing, and consider the public input regarding the ordinances, and to move the final decision regarding the ordinances to the January 26th, 2015 meeting. So that's council actions, recommended council actions for tonight. And what I'll do is I'll put this one slide back up for reference, for any, for the public's input and for any discussion we have. Any questions?
If we turn the light on, can we see that?
I think so.
So this time, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, if you wish to speak, uh, the way we're going to do this is please limit your comments to three minutes, um, and speak on any of the ordinances that are before the council. Um, Amy, keep in mind, and please remember to state your name and address on the record. This time, we'll open the public hearing.
Russ Tyree, uh, 230 Skinner Road, lived in the town since, uh, 1974. Uh, of course, we're not in favor of any kind of marijuana sales, uh, in town. I would like to introduce a friend of mine who is pastor up in West Seattle. Uh, there is a marijuana sales place right next door to the church, and he has seen all kinds of things going on. And I'd like to ask, Pastor Steve Koppelman to relate some of those things to us.
I'm Pastor Koppelman, I'm in Highland Park, that's the church up in West Seattle called White Center. You all know about that, I'm sure.
Could you state your address just for the record, please?
Uh, Steve Koppelman, uh, 111505 Southwest Park Street in West Seattle. I'm not a resident of this, of the city, but I am a Puyallup, which is next door, and, uh, but I do minister way up there, but, um, and I'm here to talk to you about, uh, about the marijuana issue and, um, because, uh, the, um, they set up a shop within 30 feet of my church. And the reason for that is because the law now, in fact, you just saw, we just got to seeing, uh, that you can't be within 1,000 feet of the schools, playgrounds, recreational centers, whatever else. But, but they don't, didn't include the churches, and they didn't include daycare centers, and they didn't include other facilities that have programs for other children, like, like, um, Salvation Army, for instance, that's right across the street from me. But anyway, let me talk about the, uh, the issue, and, and I'm going to go down to Olympia and testify there, too. But anyway, uh, let me speak to the marijuana issue up in White Se, White Center. Uh, the owner of this, of this outlet, this recreational marijuana outlet, he, he rented a, um, a spot from the, um, from the automobile repair shop right next to the church, and he brought in a shipping container, and he just, you know, on a big ship that they have. And so what he does is he sells the marijuana out of that shipping container, so you really don't need a building, so to speak. All you need is a, you know, up there anyway, uh, all you need is a shipping container and a place to put it down. But let me tell you what's going on up in, uh, in Seattle, because I don't have a lot of time. Uh, first of all, we have a huge traffic problem, because evidently this, um, this, um, drug, marijuana thing is skyrocketing. And so, um, the streets around my church and, and two or three blocks are just clogged from early morning till late at night. And, uh, there's no place for parking for even my parishioners, you know, they just, they can't even find a place. Um, so, when one car leaves, another one comes, and so I, I, I timed it, and it's only about five minutes before, you know, before one person leaves and the other one comes. So there's, there's a gazillion cars coming to go in. So, you might have a traffic problem when you, if you decide to do this thing. Um, there's another first, another problem is that, um, the, the people that are buying the, um, the recreational marijuana are, are reselling it right on the street, and they're doing it back in front of the church. And so some of my parishioners have came in, and they even have told me that, that the, that the people that have just bought it are selling it to, to them. And so if they're selling it to them, I would assume that they can sell it to anybody, and they could sell it to the kids or anybody else that comes along, you know? And, uh, also, they, um, they, they, when they, when they buy the, the marijuana...
I'm sorry, your, your time is up.
I'm already up?
Yes, you're, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Are you up for a second?
What do you mean? Mark, that's supposed to be forgotten, isn't it? I speak in favor of your approval of ordinance 2015-1891. Um, it's indicated as new here, I'm not sure what happened to the other one that was considered a planning commission. I know all last year, they didn't have numbers, so that was kind of confusing. But I speak in favor of your approval of that ordinance, 2015-1891 prohibiting all parts of recreational marijuana business in Pacific. We've talked about it many times. Um, and that question just keeps coming back for me. Is our city ready for the new business venture of for-profit legal drug trade in our community? I've heard a lot of talk about the strict oversight provided in the current state system. The investors were pushing Pacific to approve this, as said, is well-regulated from seed to sale. But as was said, our community and families live on this side of the sale, and we're not ready. We know the negative impacts of marijuana on youth and families, the increased challenges for those of us who are serving these vital partners in our community, and for those of us on this side of that sales door. What increased resources will be made available? Where will they come from? How will they be paid for? They and we are not ready. A recent Seattle Times commentary by Jonathan Martin concludes, "For all of Washington's crowing about the vanguard, uh, being on the vanguard of a new approach to marijuana, we're at an emperor's new clothes moment." He's not against it, he's just saying, we're at a moment that was said the emperor had no clothes. The laws, rules, procedures around marijuana in this state are in a state of constant change. We don't know today what will be permitted, required, or much of anything else with this business tomorrow. We don't yet have what it takes to get ready. As community leaders, it's on us to speak and act for the health of our entire community. Following the findings of the Washington State Attorney General earlier last year, and now upheld by several courts, many of our neighboring communities have prohibited recreational marijuana businesses. You can do it. I urge you to approve 2015-1891 prohibiting producers, producers, processors, and sellers of recreational marijuana in the state of Pacific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, my name is Alberita Blas, B-L-A-S. Address 300 South 55th Street, C101 Renton, Washington. Let me first say, I am not really a Washingtonian, I am a New Yorker. All right? The reason I have to state that out is because, being from New York, even before this law got passed here in the great state of Washington, marijuana sales in New York City were allowed and ignored. I have seen the degradation of neighborhoods, schools, parks, children, through the sales of marijuana through straw funds. This is my, in my opinion, no different than what I've seen in New York. Let me also add that three years ago, being a New Yorker and just learning how to drive, I got lost, and I got lost through this neighborhood. And the one thing I said to myself was, damn, what a beautiful town, it's sort of like Mayberry. I'd like to live here with my kids. But question, why would I move from New York City to come down here for a better life for myself and my child, to then think about moving to your beautiful town? And you do have a very beautiful town. If you're going to allow marijuana to be sold, when I myself personally know the damage that it could do to your community, your children, your church, your environment, the elements that will be coming through here in order to purchase marijuana. You're not going to believe it until you see it. You're not going to be prepared for it. It's going to happen, it's going to happen quick. Your whole town will be devastated, I speak from experience. In my opinion, and I have been going to several different areas to speak against this, and when they were, before the law even got passed, and you had those individuals outside of department stores sign my petition, said, no, I will not. I, I firmly believe in what I am saying here and in any other town. This is going to hurt your community, and I really would not like to see that. What I'd like to see is myself and my family move into a clean neighborhood, a clean community, where I can see them grow up without any reprisal or dangers of outside elements. If you think that it's going to be clean people coming through here and buying the stuff, you are sadly mistaken. And along with that comes the edibles. Marijuana edibles, it's not just the smoking of the pot. There are children that I have known of, who I spoke with, with parents in my Renton area, who have had children who have been induced with this stuff because fear pressure, all right? Oh, it's legal now, you can do it. Uh, no, that's not a technicality, too. You know, so, you want to protect your children, I would suggest do not pass this law. It will not do you any good. There's another way of making a buck, this is not it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, my name is Sabrina Stone. My address is 106 10,000 Northeast in Auburn, apartment 226. And I'm here because I deal with young adults that are in treatment centers and are addicted to marijuana as their gateway drug to other substances that they are afflicted with at this time. I personally myself was addicted to marijuana for 43 years. It destroyed my life. I was able to seek help and get out of that type of life. But I'm here to tell you, you don't want pot in your house. You know, it, it, the children think it's okay because it's legal. I talk to 50 young adolescents a week on marijuana, and what has it done to their lives? The people that will be purchasing and entering your town, like the lady said before me, you don't want it. You know, I grew up in a small town like Pacific, and it was safe. We could walk, we never locked our doors, the kids were able to walk freely about the town with no troubles. You start bringing in drugs, other drugs are going to follow. It's not going to be just pot or marijuana. Other drugs will come, your methamphetamines, your heroin, opiates, because they are drugs, they smoke pot for so long, and then they step up to stronger drugs. And I would hate to see Pacific fall into that trap. They save revenue, they're going to get revenue on the pot sales because they're going to be doing it their way. Like I said, they resell, they sell, they do whatever, trying to track down exactly how much pot is sold and how much revenue this town would get would be very hard. But it will damage your town, it will destroy it, and it will affect your children. Because kids aren't stupid. They see what's going on, they experiment. So, I, uh, just really want to warn you, because your children are your most precious gift from God, protect them. Thank you.
I really wasn't going to speak tonight. Duane Groft, 122 Third Avenue Northwest, uh, Pacific resident for about 20 years. Um, I already gave, uh, pulled out a little form last week and gave it to you, what I would thought as far as the different ordinances. But, um, you know, pot's going to happen in this town, and it's happening no matter what you do tonight. We know that anybody can get a hold if they really want to, and they have forever. So as far as, uh, additional actions to underage people, I don't know that that increases with this, in my opinion. Um, I would go ahead and vote for ordinance 1876. And one last thing I'd want to bring up is that, uh, what made me think about talking tonight is I was just talking with a really good friend of mine that I had lunch with today in a business meeting. And he had to leave that meeting abruptly because he was hurting so bad and go home. And the reason is he has something called tendinosis, which happens to infect your tendons all over his, he said, everything in his body all of a sudden started hurting really bad during this meeting, and he just had to leave. He takes Vicodin for this, he was also taking Ibuprofen. The Vicodin doesn't really help, Ibuprofen, he can't take anymore because he found out that that actually makes it worse. Yet, when he uses some butter that's been made medicinally, he's a medicinal user, and eats out of some crackers, he gets some relief from that. So, Vicodin, when I know what class that drug is and prescription meds, there's a lot of people that are addicted to prescription meds, they get hold of them on a daily basis, they can get a hold of marijuana in the community without going anywhere legal and getting it. The voters voted to allow recreational use of the state. So I think that it should be made available to people, and also the medicinal marijuana. Even though there's questions about how it's, um, legally allowed in this state somehow, that could be addressed soon by legislature. I, I know people that are using it and actually getting relief from it. So, kind of an odd thing, I mean, somehow it got classed as like whatever class drug years ago during the Nixon administration, but I, I just see people that are getting relief from it. So, not being a user of any kind of prescription drugs actually myself or marijuana, but I think it should be made available because people have voted to allow it in this state. Thank you.
Jean Fancher, 37248 55th Avenue South, up on West Hill. I would like to urge the council to not move forward ordinance 2014-1876, which adds or allows conditional zoning of producers, processors, and retail sales. I believe the city does not have sufficient staff, three sources for code enforcement. Right now, your code enforcement officer is contracted out. I think this ordinance should be put on hold until the council can do some work on budget and financing and increasing staff if you're going to adopt that ordinance. I also urge the council to not move forward ordinance 2014-1872. I think it should have a hold on it until the Washington State Legislature session is completed, and the state has, has had a chance to enhance or enact more, uh, regulations for the, uh, medical... for the medical gardens and dispensaries. I did go to the dispensary on Military Road this afternoon to get some information. I asked if they were licensed by the state, they said they were. They had a bodyguard at the door, he couldn't see into the sales room, there's the double door. It's at three four oh forty-nine Military Road South. So there is medical, a medical dispensary close by for Pacific residents. If I can come down the hill to come here, folks can go up the hill to go there. But I really believe that the hold should be, the prohibition on medical gardens and dispensaries should be put on hold until the council can do due diligence about budgeting and code enforcement. There are four medical dispensaries on Stewart Road. We've got the ban, interim ban now, but they're operating. I don't know what's going on there, but if we can't, if the city hasn't shut them down or reduced them, I don't have that much faith in doing anything right now on the medical. Regarding ordinance twenty fifteen eighteen eighty-eight, which allows conditional produce and process in L I zone and prohibits recreational sales, again, the city does not have enough staff in the budget to do the plan reviews, the code enforcement, the policing. So I think that should be put on hold until the council can address the budgetary impacts and the impacts to the community. I also think you should not move forward ordinance twenty fifteen eighteen ninety-one, which prohibits marijuana producers and processors and prohibits recreational sales. Moving this forward if passed would tie the city's hands, so to speak, and remove motivation from the council to address these issues about budgeting, staff, and code enforcement. Therefore, to ordinance twenty fifteen eighteen ninety, move that one forward. That extends the interim zoning ban, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ian Wilson, three one six seven hundred Court, Ian Blas. I am for eighteen seventy-six or eighteen eighty-eight. I'm currently a tier one applicant producer, processor. From what I've seen out there with working with Tumwater, working with Seattle, the crime rate has not increased. It is difficult to get started, but the crime rate has not increased. In Colorado, the crime rate has decreased fourteen percent since they have legalized marijuana. We have two recreational stores in Buckley, Washington. They have gone over very rough, it's been a very positive response. I know in Tumwater, the city is not receiving any money from the tax. However, they activated conditional enforcement, which allows upgrades to the city to curb light, helping the street. Which I, which could be beneficial. As far as being resold, nobody finds a recreational store that's being charged twenty-five percent tax and try and sell it on the black market, it's not realistic. In the medical industry, I could see that happen, it's been in the medical industry for ten years as well. It would be beneficial. I have two young children, I have no concerns with their safety, and they're my life. I would never put them in our employ or any community in our employ. If I could do it in my community, I would. I would much rather be around in many sort of facilities rather than, because I'll owe you, in my opinion, any of the way. I implore you to do this. Thank you.
Is anyone else would like to speak?
Yeah, Jerry Van Zee, Cholobaba, off around in, in Washington. I've lived here in Pacific for thirty-one years now, and raised family here. And I enjoy our, our small-town community. I'm opposed to eighteen seventy-six. I have seen the traffic jams down there on Stewart Road, and I don't think we want any part of that. I am, I'm gonna be, I guess, for eighteen ninety-one. That would eliminate or prohibit marijuana sales and producers and processors. Trying to figure out if it conflicts with eighteen seventy-two. That one also prohibits the dispensaries and reflective gardens. So if you could pass both of those, then that would eliminate any kind of marijuana activity here in Pacific. And that's what I'm about. I don't believe we need to have any kind of marijuana business in Pacific. I do believe that there's crime associated with outside these businesses, whatever this business might say. If somebody needs medical marijuana, or they wanna buy it from a recreational store, there's, sounds like there's plenty around. And, you know, if they don't have to get it here, they can go to Auburn or anywhere else close by, let them go there and get it. And I, I think the, the one proponent that just spoke, you know, is, is, is obviously in it for the business and for the money. And, you know, maybe he can just locate somewhere else and make somewhere else, but not off, not off of our apparel. So that's my end. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else would like to speak tonight? Howard?
Howard Dirx, three two four Butte Avenue. I speak on behalf of having marijuana. Marijuana is all over this town right now illegally. There's people growing it, there's people buying it, there's people selling it. And we have, I don't know, I read the papers, but I don't put too much back in the paper how many there are, if there's three, four, or five dispensaries or pot shops through your collar. But the thing that disturbs me very much, the state voted to allow him to make marijuana legal, basically. So basically, I look at it from a personal choice. If you wanna use marijuana and it's legal, that's your choice. Now, anything you do can take you down. You can eat too much sugar, you can drink beer, you can drink whiskey, you can smoke marijuana, you can do all of these things. But it isn't, none of that is not being done because you weren't forewarned. I was in high school nineteen forty-nine when marijuana was first even heard about. One placard on the wall with a picture of a leaf telling you not to use marijuana, it's not good for you. Ever since then, we've had a war on drugs, we've had all of these programs, everything imaginable to tell people not to use it. I don't use it myself, and I probably never will use it. But what I'm saying, it's a choice. It's legal, it's a person's choice. Now, if you don't wanna take care of yourself, what are you gonna do? You can't legislate laws and tell people to take care of themselves. Now, if there's four or six or eight dispensaries in town, it's not gonna last very long. If law economics will not let it happen because the supply and demand is one, is gonna regulate how many people survive. And what I think is, it's a state law, some people get some comfort out of it, and I guess when you're sick. I've known a couple of family instances years ago with my father-in-law, and I feel sorry for people who have to use it, but it's still their choice. I'm getting sick and tired, every time there's a law passed, somebody gets up and takes your freedom away from you, your freedom to purchase, or you do this, do that. Now, I'm not saying your city shouldn't collect some revenue off of it. Quite frankly, it'd be a very good source if they took all the money you collect off and put it in the street fund and start fixing these streets in town. But I, I am, I'm sure the right to buy it and for the right to use it, medically or otherwise. I don't think there's very much of it being sold medically, I think it happens.
That's your time, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Final opportunity, is there anyone that would like to speak on this topic? Now, the council has a decision, do we wanna hold this public hearing open until next week, or do you wanna close it now? Okay, one last time. Okay, this public hearing's closed.